Good evening, welcome to the April 13th, 2015, Eastman City Council. If you would, if you got a cellphone, either turn it off or mute it, I would appreciate it. Okay. You will withstand, Mr. Prince lead us in an indication, then we do pledge to lead us to the flag.
Let us bow our heads. Lord, we thank you that we, as the city council, are able to come together, Lord, and do business and consider the issues and concerns of the citizens of this county. Father God, we thank you that as we consider those issues, we will agree to disagree. We will continue to work together and walk in harmony according to your will. Father God, we pray for wisdom, leading, and guidance. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first thing on agenda, we need to approve the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Thank the motion to approve the agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. So care about all. Okay, now we need to approve the minutes for the March 23rd, 2015 regular meeting, March 24th to 26th, special call meetings, and you have them in your things, so I need a motion to approve those.
Thank the motion to approve all of them.
I've got a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, raise your hand. So care about all. Whole business, signed bill request from GSA Media. Betty, did you want to say something, Ford?
Oh, yes, uh, now written for last month and a half, two months, whatever, several months this has been going on, we've had some call meetings, uh, we have had discussions, we've had all kind of different types of meetings and everything and all, and as has been alleged, the city council members will come, are faced with some decisions, a lot of times they're a lot real easy, uh, but then sometimes we have some that we, folks get upset, folks get mad, some folks get angry, and, uh, I know for me, it's given us a lot of thought, a lot of reading over and rereading and questioning and asking and everything and all, and, uh, I reckon without, probably shouldn't give away the way I probably am looking at voting tonight, uh, it's hard for me to go against something that right on down the agenda, we're in the process of resolutions for our new reinstating downtown development authority and all, and the message that we're gonna send to them that we want to keep the town the same and all, when we're actually charging them to go out and revitalize downtown and revitalize our downtown business district and all, so with that said, I'll shut up and let anybody else have a little discussion before I make a motion.
Anybody else like say anything? Okay. So what I need, get this right, I need a motion to approve the signed bill request from GSA meeting. Do I hear a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I got a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, raise your hand. So care about all.
Please let the record show that I didn't cast a vote since I accused myself during the call.
Okay, I'm glad you said that, okay.
Did you, did you, did the council want to impose any additional restrictions? I think Mr. Stigall had originally said that he wouldn't put parking there or a dumpster there, is Mr. Stigall?
We can hear you.
Get closer.
Is that agreeable with you that you would not?
That, 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 sorry. Would you come, would you come up in to microphone and tell us your name and, uh, and we can talk with you about it and make sure we a hundred percent together, okay?
My name's Glenn Stigall, I'm the owners of GSA Media, and to what Ricky just said, basically, that provision is already in the contract that we have with the property owner, and so I don't know if there will be anything extra that you would need to add to your motion.
Well, from the last meeting, Mr. Stigall, he agreed with everything we said, that he would correct if anything was wrong, that he would work, work with us and the people to try to get everything right, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
The billboard sign, yeah, here at this corner, that we, at every meeting, that's what we've been talking about, putting an advertising sign at the corners, one point over to that wall, by where American Jack's was at, that little hill right there, Mr. Stigall and his companies wanting to put a, let's say.
Advertising.
An advertising sign up there, and there's, uh, this is what we've been going back and forth on for the last few months.
And just for the audience information, just want to also include that we do have a moratorium on new sign permits as we look to update our codes, so just, let everybody know that that's a work in progress now, just making sure that that ordinance reads like it needs to.
No more questions, we'll go forward. Your business, monthly fire department report. Fire G?
Good evening. We had thirty-eight calls from the month of March, twenty-four of those in the city and fourteen in the county. We had three structured fires, one caused by Stowe, the other by Eden System, both those in the city, and the other one was out in the county, caused by a legal shortage. So, that brush fire down, I've admitted to three, they've been up pretty high, the range and so forth, brought them down. We answered one natural gas leak, uh, we answered fourteen medical calls and six vehicle accidents, several miscellaneous calls, electronic alarms, uh, smoke alarms, live flight land and so forth.
Any questions for Fire G? Thank you, Carl. Next on the agenda, monthly places, four bits spec, if you come up and give us your report.
Okay, for the month of March, we patrol ten thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven miles, use eleven hundred and eight gallons of gas, answered a thousand and seventy-seven calls, and were at twenty-eight traffic records.
Any question, Ms. Becky?
I was just gonna let you know that we finally did hire some new employee for one of the positions we had. We hired Kale Dunn, he did work with us at previous time, and he's coming back, he's already certified, he's got all of his things, his tastes are certified, his coslizer certified, everything we need, so we did hire him and he's supposed to start on the twentieth.
And that leaves you, how many short now?
Two.
That's our younger stepson.
Yeah, that's right.
Are we getting a good amount of leads through the Department of Labor?
We are, all of them's coming, all of ours go through the Department of Labor.
Any more question, Ms. Becky?
Uh, I would just like to say thank you to Ms. Becky and her department for coming out last week and speaking to our boys, to men, uh, mentoring group, and they were just thrilled, that's all they talked about the next day, and I think that helps to develop good community relations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Next thing on agenda, we need to approve the monthly bills from March 23rd to April 13th. You have them in front of you, have any questions, come down and see the ladies down here, but I need a motion to approve the monthly bills from March 23rd to the 13th of April.
So moved.
Got a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, raise your hand. So care about all. Okay, moving right along, approved the CDBG bids.
And then this is something that Mr. Milton and Mr. Ronan Glad on that side of town, the bids were taken March the 12th, 2015, and I'll just read the bids out, and we have this from our engineers asking us to approve the bid amount. Griffin Folsom Construction, six hundred and ninety-seven, six forty-seven. Popco Incorporated, seven sixty-five, six sixty-nine, fifty. East Coast Asphalt, eight seventy-seven, oh-one-six, point ninety-seven, and we're asking you if you would accept the low bid, six ninety-seven, six forty-seven.
What was that figure for Popco?
Popco was seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, six sixty-nine, fifty.
All right, and this is, this is to, for the shorn dream and dig everything over in the back of the house?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got, we got a half, half a million dollar grant, so it's gonna cost us a hundred and ninety-seven, five hundred and six forty-seven.
Yes.
If we approve this bid?
I would like for Raymond to speak.
Thank you.
Was you fit to make the motion?
I agree with that, no, I'm, no, I'm gonna let you go.
Okay, this is my district, and I make a motion that we approve the hundred and ninety, six hundred and ninety-seven? Six hundred and ninety-seven, forty-seven, do I hear a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
All right, do I hear a second?
Did you make the motion?
Oh, let's do that again. I make a motion that we approve, probably I need a second.
I'll second it then.
All in favor, raise your hand. So care about all. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we need to approve the Georgia City Week Resolution, Tyler Lannic Kena?
Lanciano.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we could ask Mr. Henry Whitfield and Mr. Tyler Lanciano to step forward. Mr. Whitfield is the director of the Cochran and Eastman Campus, and he just wants to introduce himself, so it's all?
Good. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure to be with you all tonight. My name is Henry Whitfield, and I'm the director for the Cochran and Eastman Campus, and I want to thank you all for the opportunity to be with you. This is a great opportunity for us to be able to be a part of the resolution reading process for Georgia Cities Week. As you all know, we're located close by, Chairman also just out there with us today. We are continuing to grow, and as you all know, I certainly hope and you know, we'll be recognized effective July the first with Middle Georgia State University, will change from college to university, so that'll bring some new opportunities for us. Our sole purpose being here tonight is that the invitation of Councilman Johnson to be here to read the city's resolution, Georgia Cities Week, and before we do that, I'd like to ask our Student Government Association President Jenny McCartney to say a few words about the Student Government Association. We have most all the members of our Student Government Association with us here tonight, so again, thank you all for the opportunity to be with you, so Jenny?
Hi, my name is Jenny McCartney, I'm originally from Henry County, Georgia, McDonough area, and I'm the SGA director this year, and I will be relinquishing my seat in a month, but our students work diligently throughout the year to aid student voices to the administration, that's our whole goal, is to foster student needs and then present them to the administration in such a way that they will side with us as best by the college, and so these students work very hard, they're also diligent students in their own respective, both the maintenance, flight, helicopter, ATC, as well are all represented in that regard, so we would love to foster better relationships as we turn into a university with the local city and county and just recognize that there's college out there and there are kids that want to become more involved in the community and is that that aspect, Mr. Milton actually came out and sat with us during a meeting, and so that was really encouraging, to continue to foster those relationships as we grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Tyler's hometown is Newburgh, New York. Tyler's a junior majoring in aerospace operations with flight and a flight helicopter. In the near future, Tyler hopes to have the opportunity to fly helicopter tours in the western United States. Tyler's extracurricular activities include playing in the school's marching band during football season, serving as the newly elected president of the Roterhead Association, and as the secretary slash treasurer for the Eastman Campus SGA, and when he's not doing all of that, he enjoys working on computers, so, thank you, Tyler.
Thank you. This is a resolution of the city of Eastman, recognizing Georgia Cities Week, April nineteenth to twenty-fifth, 2015, and encouraging all citizens to support the celebration and corresponding activities. Whereas city government is the closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents, and whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to an understanding of its many responsibilities, and whereas city government officials and its employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits, and whereas Georgia Cities Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by city government in our lives, and whereas this week offers an important opportunity to spread the word to all citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence this branch of government which is closest to the people, and whereas the Georgia Municipal Association and its member cities have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal governments through a variety of different projects and information, and whereas Georgia Cities Week offers an important opportunity to convey to all the students of Georgia that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Now, therefore be it resolved that the city of Eastman declares April nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, 2015, as in Georgia Cities Week. Be it further resolved that the city of Eastman encourages all citizens, city government officials, and employees to do everything possible to ensure that this week is recognized and celebrated accordingly, passed and adopted by the city of Eastman this thirteenth day of April, 2015.
Would you like to say something else?
I just would encourage the student government out there to know that the city always has an open door, the council always has an open door, and we look forward to more communication with you guys. And outside of that, I just wanted to recognize our activities for next week for Georgia Cities Week. Monday, here in the city council chambers at 6:00 PM, we'll have the high school student government coming over to do a mock city council. The theme of the event is Destination Downtown, so we'll be throwing some mock, mock situations concerning our downtown, so I invite all of you to come out and see, see what they come up with. Tuesday, we're partnering with our friends down at the chamber to host the downtown business after hours. Ms. Iverson, have we got a firm time?
Yes, it's at 6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM?
Timeless Grace.
I'm sorry, what was that?
At the new beauty mall.
Okay, 6:00 PM downtown at Timeless Grace, that's the beauty mall that was just recently open, and then Thursday, we'll be doing a downtown visioning session down here at City Hall. Our DDA just had their first organizational meeting and has begun to get started, and so we're gonna look at getting the community to help them shape where we want our downtown area to go, so invite you all just, you know, to come out, please spread the word, and we're gonna look to have a good week of activities. All ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you so much. If anybody else got anything they would like to add to that?
I'd just like to say it's nice to look out, to honestly see young people like that take their time off to come to the council meeting and be active in government like that. Appreciate y'all being here.
Thank y'all. Okay, next on the agenda, DDA and intergovernmental agreement.
We make a motion that we approve the Georgia Cities Week Resolution.
Second. Got a second, all in favor, raise your hand. So care about all. All right, number six, do we need to approve the DDA intergovernmental agreement?
Yeah, Tom, I shared this with you guys a few meetings back, now that the DDA board has met and put their structure together, this intergovernmental agreement kind of completes that circle and actually gives them a little pot of money to actually begin with. As I shared with you before, I thought one of the worst things we could do was give them a job and, you know, make that an unfunded mandate with no money behind them, so this intergovernmental agreement just goes a long way of being wordy to say that we will give them $10,000 in order, in their efforts to revitalize our central business district. Another point of it does make available our city attorney as their legal counsel if they so choose to, and it also just names our city manager as the primary point of contact when it comes to the ED, the DDA, and that's in the gist. Our attorney has looked it over and has, she didn't have any changes or objections, so I'd like to offer a motion that we approve this intergovernmental agreement, which would then go over to the board for their approval.
And y'all are meeting when?
Their next meeting is, uh...
It's gonna be...
I know it was a slight change.
Yes, um...
That's second Thursday?
Second Thursday, all right, second Thursday, May, which will be the fourteenth, May the fourteenth.
So their next meeting will be May the fourteenth, this will go over to them to review, with them not having any changes, you know, they could approve it and it'll take, take effect then, but, uh, yes, I'll make a motion that we approve this intergovernmental agreement with the downtown development authority.
Question before we get a second?
Sure.
Does the $10,000 go in with that vote?
Yes, that, part of the intergovernmental agreement is $10,000.
Okay, y'all understand, okay. All right, I got a motion, do I hear a second, or any more discussion first? Do I hear a second?
I'll be at the second.
Got a second, all in favor, raise your hand. So care about all. That's a good thing. Thank y'all. Okay. Okay, we need to approve to apply for USDA loan grant to purchase two police vehicles, Ms. B.
Okay, and we have talked about this before, and, but we just didn't make a motion in a second to apply for it. We've had the public hearing, Ms. Iverson had the public hearing, it was held April the tenth at 10 o'clock, we didn't actually have any people here, but some people from the city hall, so the vehicles will cost $34,267, for two of them, that comes to $68,534. This is not in the budget this year, but we will have to make a payment until next year, so it would go in the budget for the next year budget, and plus, if you take $25,000 grant, which we're hopefully almost sure that we're gonna get it, that would leave $43,534, so I'd ask that y'all make a motion that we go ahead and apply.
Now, what are you...
You said $34,000, at first you said $34,000 for two of them, that's for each one?
No, one each.
Each one?
Uh-huh. Comes to $64,534, and then we're asking for a $25,000 grant, so that will come off, but the total, total financed for the two vehicles will be $43,534.
And we have paid off the previous loan on the previous...
Yes, we don't owe any on the police cars that we have.
And this is for what?
For two police cars, for the police department.
Okay, now this, okay, this is...
And that's through USDA, it's those interceptors. Ms. Becky, do you want to? And that's through Brandon, oh, two.
This is actually a SUV, it's like a Ford Explorer that they have, we, Randy and I went over there and we looked at everything they had, and everybody's really going to the Ford Explorer. One of the cars that we have was the one that Ronnie Drakes drove that got totaled out completely, I think we get insurance on that one. The other car we had was, the transmission's completely gone and dead. All the 2009s, we're trying to get rid of those, to work back up to where we were before, to get them, all rid of the 2009s, but those two vehicles right there, the two that we're asking for, we don't even have two vehicles in service right now because of that. But these are SUVs that we got, and they look like a Ford Explorer, and all of them are really going to that now, everybody's going to that.
Was it using twigs?
Not at you, no.
You sure you can get back to it, by the way?
Well, if I had somebody that could ride them, yeah, I would try.
Bobby did ride one when he was a policeman.
No, I didn't.
Okay, all right, any more discussion? If not, I need a motion to approve to apply for the USDA loan grant to purchase two police vehicles.
I'll make that move.
I got the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, raise your hand. So care about all.
Thank y'all.
Okay, city manager report.
Okay, don't really have a lot, GMA District Nine listin' sessions will be held Thursday, April the 23rd, Lyons, in Lyons, Georgia, so if any of y'all want to go, it can go, just let Ms. Iverson, and we will put your name in.
What's the time on it, you know? Six to eight, day, day.
Yeah. I didn't write the time here, but six to eight.
It's the day of the list, of, uh, we're set, the session for the Georgia Cities Week to...
It's on a Thursday, and...
It's on a Thursday, it's on Thursday, same Thursday.
So, we kind of figured that most of y'all wouldn't be able to attend because of that, so, but if some of you do want to, let us know and we'll put your name in.
Okay.
Okay, the heart of Georgia Regional Airport, we'll be having a forward celebration, April the 30th, at the terminal building at 5:00 PM, PM, if any of y'all council or anybody wants to go. The celebrity dinner, I think we give y'all information on that, if any of y'all want to go to that, y'all should have it in your packet or you got that, so if you want to do that, just let Ms. Iverson know and we'll get you, get you signed up for that. And I'm sure some of y'all seen the weather was bad, had a little small storm, had a few trees down, one on Seventh Avenue and Norman Fifth Avenue, out this way up from the Huddle House and Fifth and Ogden, and so we had our people work in the next morning to cut up the trees and get those up, so...
Any spills?
Sir?
Any spills?
No, sir.
All right.
And no spills, done talked to the treatment plant people, they had no problems.
All right.
So that's all I have.
That's all you have?
Uh-huh.
All righty, other business from council, Mr. Prince, do you have anything?
I don't have anything, sir. Just since our last meeting, I had a chance to attend a class that the city of Hawkinsville and GMA sponsored on neighborhood revitalization, and just some creative things that they did, which I wasn't aware of, but it's an old mill that they turned into apartments, and yeah, you'd be surprised how nice those are in, are in there, and affordable, $450 a month, two bedrooms, but, but very nice, and one of the things that they tied into it was their version of their farmer's market, they're calling their city market, and it was just an old warehouse that they kind of reconverted, so it definitely, it definitely kind of got the wheels turning in my mind, and we're gonna see, they were able to secure some different grants and stuff for farmer's markets, and I think it might be a blueprint on, on the way we can go, so, just stay tuned, I guess.
All right, thank you. Bobby?
No, nothing, man.
Betty?
No, it's good, I want to reiterate what Bobby said, I go playing to school for coming and participating with us tonight, and look forward to working with y'all in the future, and anytime y'all get any questions or want to come down, please feel free, come ask, it's good, good to have y'all.
First thing I want to do, I want to recognize one of our visitors tonight, this is my grandson up here, he, uh, his name is Gavin Mullis, and he really interested in politics, so his other granddaddy is county commissioner, and then I'm the board down here, so I'm glad you come tonight. Okay, uh, one thing I got, up here, Chick King coming down this way, that hole is washed out real bad, you know what I'm talking about? And it needs some work down here, and who's responsible for repairing Griffin Street? Is that us, or is that state?
Y'all might on the side of the river state.
Is there any way that we can, I was told today that they, the hole over there, it is, don't fall in it?
I don't know, I know there is one next to the sandwich shop, the pizza place?
Yeah.
There's one there.
That could be the one they was talking about.
As you turn in, we'll, we'll check on that and see if we can get it.
All right, all righty. Uh, any more from the council? Okay, all in participation, if you would like to come up...